Just before we meet in order, please stand for the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the republic, of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent. Alright, we asked anyone that has cellphones, please turn them off. And that will go ahead and get started.
Request to withdraw items from consensus.
Item K.
M and K?
Just K.
Just K.
Anything besides K? I move that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum, A through J and L through Q.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Moving down to item K. Approved of budget transfers over $10,000. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the October budget transfers over $10,000 be approved as presented.
Second.
Lisa, can you take us through the why we're why these kind of group of transactions you have there, what's behind that?
It's just a one transaction. This is two of money from the 2010 code, which is the curriculum code to the principal code. So I guess it's characters paid out of the appropriate budget code.
There was the money wasn't in the right code before?
We didn't budget it that way.
Alright, anybody have any other questions?
Let's leave it, maybe we'll, in case we're setting it off.
Before we get out of here fast. Okay, finished the consensus items, so next on the list, we asked Mrs. Carter to come in. We had some discussion at the last meeting around some support, additional support in GLP, and we looked into that, and Mrs. Carter has an update on what we did with that.
Okay. Based on the question the board had asked me to do, I first asked the staff, can you see that? Oh sure. I'm there, my phone is there.
She couldn't see you, that was the problem.
My first look into what were some of the options that the staff felt were feasible or to be, and the staff really felt that it was necessary for their classrooms and dressing classroom size, we thought that really what they needed was a teacher to be added, and obviously we have a classroom size issue that I can't handle, but realizing the fiscal constraints, I really had them look at, well, if we had to hire one teacher, where do you feel that would be most necessary, most effective? So the staff really pulled their discussions and decided that it would be at the first grade level. So we did come down to having that conversation, that they were looking to support a first grade teacher. So moving forward with that, they asked if we could resurvey the parents, because we originally surveyed the parents that it would possibly be a K, one multi-age, and that really is a different class to the community than a first grade teacher, and says a lot of different things. So we resurveyed the parents at the GLP, just at the first grade level, letting them know that it would be a possibility of starting another first grade classroom, a first grade teacher, not a multi-age model. We did get the surveys back, and other surveys, we only had eight parents of the entire group going to move their children up their classrooms at this point in time. We didn't receive some narrative from the parents, that it wasn't that they were happy with the class size, but that they were just not willing to have their children moved at this time. So the surveys resulted in that there were eight families, or eight children that were moved. Obviously, that does not make a class mathematically. So those were the results of that. One of the other questions the board had asked me to do was look at class sizes among the very common schools, and the top 15 schools, or at least the schools that like us or above us in the ranking. And I did send that information to the board, and all of the received that survey. But just to recap, at the kindergarten levels, and then you saw with the kindergarten first and second grade, the results were all over the place. But for the moment, at the kindergarten level, of the 12 schools that responded to me, that are either at our level or above us in the ranking, eight of the schools have the same class size, two were higher than us, two were lower. For the first grade level, 12 schools responded to me, 10 of them have lower class size, two have the same. And of the second grade classroom size, seven were lower, four were the same. Now, it's really difficult to really summarize that, because a lot of them gave me a range. So if they gave me a range, I tried to pick the middle number, it's really difficult to work with a range. But for the most part, it does fall all over, we're somewhat consistent, it was really first grade where it stood out, so which really led to part of the conversation I had with the GLP teacher, where that was really where first grade are our biggest class sizes, and it really had to do with where our curriculum falls at the GLP with first grade, and the fact that when we looked at our counterparts, that was where we were higher than a lot of our counterparts. So that was the information. So I guess to summarize, it really was the teacher that they wanted to support for a position, as opposed to things we looked at, teaching assistants, aides, and things like that, where we fall out in class sizes across the board, and where our parents fell out with the survey. So those really are the results we have at this point in time with class size.
Okay, so we, because we had looked at the end of the last meeting, we had asked Lisa to go back and see if she could find some money to support something there, and we came up with enough money for one position, or however best your group thought they could spend that money, right? So right now, even aides and things like that is not feasible, in your staff's opinion?
That would be correct. And I think it has to do with, there's multiple reasons why, I think when you're looking at a teacher's aide, it's another piece of planning for them, when they're already planning for a lot of students in their classroom, the Common Core learning standards, APPR, they already have a pretty full docket of tests, so then they're planning for a aide. When you're looking at geographically, they already have a significant amount of bodies in their classroom, so to put another adult in there becomes another issue. So I think for those two reasons, with a couple other things, I think the teachers really felt that it was really that teacher that would make a smaller class size across the board, probably their best option.
Okay, but we couldn't get enough support parent-wise for doing that? Anybody have any other questions?
I'd like to know, are we going to go forward with the teacher or not? It sounds like we don't have the support for the parents.
We do not.
So everything's going to stay the same?
As right now, I say we were at a status quo, kind of at an impasse, and I'm looking for guidance from the board.
Well, we offered up the funding for one equivalent position, and it does sound like a couple rounds you went with your staff and the parents, and couldn't really come up with a feasible use of that money, it sounds like. Is that accurate?
I think, I think the issue is we're now at the end of November, and we have bonds made between students and teachers and their peers, and the only next step would be we would force those to be broken, and we've had that conversation.
Conversation with?
With the board, and the administration.
Yeah, I think it'd be a tough thing to force, especially if you already asked them if they were volunteer, not to force them, I think it would be a bit much.
What if everyone changed? What if come January 1st, everyone changed? They didn't get choice, teachers get a new, it's like starting into...
It's like for kids.
There's a lot of people out there, you can stop.
I think it's part of the common data model, is right now, I don't think that's a working model, and the fact that due to APPR, all of our staff members are attached to a student roster and their achievement, and they have to look forward based on how where the students grow, and they have to have to invest in their achievement, and what they have invested in, how far have they come for half a year, they're responsible for that achievement.
Very good point.
Yeah, I think we have to respect what our parents are telling us. I mean, if the re-survey had come back with something other than that, I think most of us would have been ready to move forward, but considering that it isn't, I mean, I don't think we have a choice.
Any questions, other questions or comments?
I'm assuming we're going to look at this during the budget period, and then next year for staffing levels and everything, so that we don't run into this again, hopefully.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter.
Thank you.
I did want to make one comment, this is my personal comment, not necessarily the board's, but these kinds of situations are very difficult to try and figure out a solution for. We went and found some money, we tried to make this work, and we invite, and we have many times invited staff and faculty to bring forward suggestions, ideas, meet with us, and talk with us. I have to say, I was pretty disappointed to see an ad in the Penny Saver sponsored by the ETA this past weekend, kind of stirring up controversy, or trying to bring this discussion in some other direction. So, I again would like to reiterate, we want to work on all of these solutions, we want to work on them together, things like that don't help a sense of working together. So I'd ask that, let's do more dialogue, and less of those kinds of things, if you could, please. Alright, with that, we have two minutes for anyone who'd like to come up and speak, and please identify yourself, and you, any affiliation.
Hi, my name is Tina Powell, I'm a parent to two GLP. I am trying not to overreact, and be that too excited about what Mrs. Carter has laid out here. For one, I don't think that the parents were, I don't know, I guess given a good enough explanation of exactly what was going on, because people I worked with had even asked me, oh, I got this letter, I didn't know what this was about, and I explained to them, you know, well, this is what this was for, you know, I was at the door, and she goes, I didn't know that, she goes, I sent back no. Well, okay, I mean, my daughter is attached to her teacher, I sent in yes, because I'd much rather have her getting more individualized attention. Yeah, she'll be upset for a little bit, she'll get over it, I mean, that's what kids do. They have to do this every year, they make bonds, they go away for the summer, they come back, they make new friends. So now we're saying, okay, the class sizes are big, last year the class sizes were too big, nothing was done. This year, now we're saying it's the end of November, well, close to the end of November, we didn't get enough parent support, so I guess, again, this school year is done. It's my son's last year at GLP, you guys failed him last year, your family can win again this year, and it's done. So I guess since my little TD is only in kindergarten, maybe she stands a chance. I'm just very disappointed at the way this has played out. So, I mean, I don't know that there's anything you can do, but if the funding is there for that position, there has to be a way to somehow get that teacher to help in those classrooms. There has to be a way. I mean, I guess, that's...
Thanks, Tina.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Archibald, I have a student in first grade. I just wanted to, I just think at this point, because it is December, it took so long to get to this point, we need to think outside of us. I think, you know, kind of piggybacking on what Tina said, is that we need to give our teachers support, and the teachers, there are obviously, you know, we mentioned the aide, you know, to help with management, our kids don't need more managing, they need more instruction, so they need a teacher. I've talked with a couple other parents, I know that there was email sent around to the teacher, Mrs. Carter, that maybe that teacher can be a support for each teacher during that, that instructional time, that reading instructional time, so that they can pull the class out, that you get a smaller individual time, and you can get a modular small group instruction. I just think that we, you know, I just think we need to keep thinking, and, you know, not throw away the year, and give our teachers more support, and our kids more instruction.
My voice is shaking, it sounds because I'm nervous, I'm freezing. You know, many people have come up with our spoken and said what we wanted to say this evening, and we just wanted to sort of qualify our statement as the preference for an actual teacher versus an aide or several aides. And the real fundamental issue is that the tenor of the times right now is sort of encapsulated in the term achievement, and that is what everybody's looking for, that's what we're trying to raise for our students at every level in our school district, yes we should. And the real fundamental foundation for achievement is instruction. And as a teacher in a classroom, I've been teaching since 1986, and I'm telling you that management is not the issue, as Mrs. Archibald said, it's not about managing your children, or making sure everyone is on task, it's about having quality quantitative time, spent on content issues, with lengthy instructional times with individuals and small groups. You can introduce a concept to a whole group, but the real instruction and core instruction where you connect to a student is when you are dealing with individuals and small groups, where you get to know them, you see the response, you know what their learning style is, you really connect. You know, I really applaud the thought about maybe taking this in a different direction, and using the teacher coming into the building to help with some instruction. I've been lucky to work with a lot of aides over the years, who have been wonderful people, who would do anything I ask, terrific with the children, however legally, and as far as their own academic background, they are not qualified to offer the instruction that we are mandated to do. And I think that we really need to consider the fact that it's best to hire a teacher that's who belongs, I mean, with that one-on-one contact with the child, we want them to learn, we want them to progress. Right now, because of the numbers, I have five reading groups in my classroom, and two children who really belong in a separate group themselves, because they are such emergent leaders at this time. And the time that I'm giving them, I'm meeting with those groups, but the time that I'm giving them is much shorter than I would have been able to give them in years past, simply because of the numbers of children and the diverse learning abilities and stages they're in. So if we did get another teacher, whether it was help out in our own classroom, I think we do need to pick out of the box, and look at some other avenues. I have received several emails from parents with suggestions, with their permission, you know, if you want me to share, I don't know if it's the ultimate solution we're looking for, but I do think that all the instructions are made to go with this. You know, I can have an aide help you keep a child on task, I can have an aide pass out supplies, I can have an aide listen to a child read, that's not the same thing as teaching that child coordination.
I'm getting mixed messages. I really am getting mixed messages, and maybe I don't have things clear, but there were 10 students brought in in August, that were really lower your, I mean, we all want less. That would not be known to anyone.
In June, I had 24, so we knew our class sizes. We knew last year when Mrs. Shell...
Not true.
Yes.
Okay, and then tell me, you know, once you, so you don't want an aide to be a teacher?
You know, it's really, as I said, an aide helps with facilities management, okay? For instance, if a child really needs to go through their goal words, perhaps, to see what they are, and their side words, that's formative assessment, that's not instruction. An aide that doesn't have a teacher certification, an aide legally cannot take old instructions from a teacher.
So what are you asking for right here?
We want another teacher.
Then Mrs. Carter just...
We're going to have to move on.
I would like to share something, could I have my two minutes? My children go to Hamburg. Hamburg has put two new teachers, as far as I know, in because their class size was too large. The parents were in full support, and to be honest, the educators, the people who understood what's right for kids, were the ones who chose the children. Because classrooms can't just be, they have to be heterogeneous, you have to have a mix of high, middle, low. I think we're going about this the wrong way. It has happened in Hamburg, a fifth grade teacher was just added, I spoke to a parent whose child was put in that class, she is very happy. Kids are very flexible, they understand it. They held a meeting with the parents to discuss the reasons why another classroom teacher was put in. They did not survey the parents to say if they wanted to go. The principal personally called every family to say, your child has been chosen. They, the teacher came in and met every child ahead of time, and was in every classroom, so the kids knew this new teacher. Then, when he started, which was a couple weeks back, they had a party. It has gone over very well, the children are happy, they have more time with an instructor, they have more time with a trained professional, they have more time to bond with that teacher, because now they have a smaller class size. And it was actually the parents in Hamburg who wanted this, in November, it happened in November. I do not think it's too late to add another teacher to first grade, I think we're going about this the wrong way. And then at budget time, we need to add another one in K and second. We are not doing our children right at this point, and I am here to speak for them.
Mrs. Carter just came up and said, no.
She said the response was minimal.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to leave it to the standard formula, that is, depends to speak about your topic, it's not a question and answer session, Barbara.
That's all I wanted to say, I do think it can be done. Another teacher was added in August, because they looked at the numbers, and they quickly added another teacher, Charlotte Avenue, to make their classes smaller. Hamburg has a maximum amount in their classrooms, and they stick by it, so I think it can be done, I think we just need to look about this a different way, and look at what's right for the kids, and trust the educators and the people that know them to make the right choices. And the kids, the kids will do well, I know they will. And I want to thank Mr. Burns again for coming in to... Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Hall, I'm the parent of two children here in the school district. And the reason why I am here tonight to speak to you is to really give you feedback about a program that I spoke about last morning, and it's the music, the changes to the music program. The music program here in Eden is wonderful, and we brag about it, we publicize it, we even put it in position, and we're posting position vacancies. And I really want to, I just want to keep talking about it, I want to keep eating, and providing feedback to the board, and just get the right people talking about it. So in my document, I have put some questions in there, some things that I thought maybe if you could ask questions, you might ask me. So again, why am I speaking today? Really to encourage the continued discussion and communication with everyone that's involved, parents, teachers, administration, school board. I really do believe there's a little bit too much confusion, who's talking to who, and what kind of information. So I'd like to encourage all of those people to sit around the same table, and have those questions asked and answered. And I am concerned that the changes are hurting the music program. How are they impacting my family? Honestly, they're working out very well for us, I'm able to bring my daughter to school twice a week, and she is doing well there. I am concerned what it's going, what the music program is going to look like for my now second grader, when she's in fifth grade, what is the music program going to look like at that point? Why aren't there more parents here? Well, there's, I'm not sure everyone knows what's going on, what's happening. And on page two, I do have the numbers for, as of, I think it was the 14th or 15th of November, where the numbers have been last year, where they are this year, there's a dramatic decrease in the participation within those grades, or within those band and orchestra, the one that jumps out would be a sixth grade band, going from 42 down to 25. And then I also have a list of some questions, that maybe you too have the same kind of questions, so if we could get together with everyone and ask those questions, I would like it. I know the one thing that's jumping out to me, the one question that I'll mention is the increase in science and social studies. I know that my daughter is not getting that increase in science or social studies. Also on page two, there's a list of parents that would be happy to talk to any one of you, and they will share their individual experiences, and in all fairness, I would suggest following up, or speaking with all of the parents involved. I think the people that are listed there tend to have their concern, their kids are either involved or not involved for one reason or another, but in all fairness, I think it would be nice to follow up with those, all of the people involved with the program. And one last thing, and it's not related at all to news, like I did put it on the document, but I've seen the board encouraging public feedback, doing online surveys, and getting people involved with the hiring of superintendent, all of these things that are positive and encouraging. And I wonder if the board might consider a more positive format in which parents can interact with you. I do feel like this maybe is very intimidating for a lot of people, I would like to have something maybe a little bit more positive, increase in communications, and I'd be happy to help you be on those committees, finding people to be on those committees, so, thank you.
I need to bring mine down, I have three kids that go to the high school here. Let's talk a little bit about sports programs here, football especially. Our sports, our football program is history our last four years here, we've made the playoffs in the last four years, but our field is atrocious. One rainy game, we can't play on the field again. That's one of the, I know I voted for the sports program, we voted for the sports program, we either got to get all in it, or get out of it, because the field is atrocious, they're gold posts are from the 60s yet. The other thing is that you go to these other fields, and I know they probably have a different budget system, but we hold some of these like Southwestern, and outstanding fields, outstanding everything, when we come here to host them, and we go to Dunkirk, Pioneer, which has the turf fields, the lights, the whole nine yards, it's a buck to get in. You go here, it's three bucks to get in, you got a concession stand here in a box. It's just, you can't hear the PA system on the other side of the field, it's in bad shape, it needs a lot of attention. On that same subject, during the homecoming, I don't know how many people were here, but it was pretty crowded, the girls also had a volleyball tournament going on, there was only one gas and open at the end of the hall here, one, for all those people, and I know, I don't know if men and women, but the men, there's only two sitting stalls and three standing stalls. The line was out the door. Luckily, I was lucky enough to find somebody, take my nephew down to the gym locker room, where you sit right there, there's no doors, I'm sure I'm one of you here, you've got doors in your bathrooms at home. You sit right there, you're looking at all the lockers, boom, I mean, this is a stone age here, we either got to get into the sports program, or get out, one of the two. I don't know how you feel about that, but the scoreboard put halfway through the season. Now I know there's a slush fund for that kind of thing, we talked about it before, that when the volleyball on that rifts, we don't cancel the season, there's got to be something, and I know there's a slush fund in place for that. We've talked about that fund before, I know you guys talked about it, I've seen it before, but is there not? When something breaks during the season, isn't there a fund set?
We have money for repairs, that's budgeted, but we have no slush fund to replace the $30,000 or $40,000 scoreboard.
So what do you do?
We have to figure that out, we have to work on it, go into this budget this season.
And the scoreboard, the field needs so much work, and like I said, we're a competitive team now, in the last four or five years, I mean, not that we weren't before, but we've been in, you know, playoffs, so I'd like to, you know, to address that, but again, get in or do something, or we should get out.
Good evening, my name is Matt Goo, I'm the parent of three kids, two in elementary school, one at the GLP. I stand, I'm just going to read this out loud. I stand before you tonight, for the first time, as a parent of children in the Eden District, and hopefully not for us, I believe it's important to take positive after-world education with our kids. I'm here with questions regarding the future of the music program, someone that Karen brought up, both instrumental and vocal in our district. Not going to be a bear at the point fingers, I'm not going to purchase shoes with a negative perspective, only interested in asking appropriate questions, and with productive answers and solutions for the betterment of our kids. Questions I've said already about moving the elementary instrumental on samples to 740 and 20, we're just now seeing if you're limited, we may not see for a few years what the long-term opportunity, and this is really one I'm interested in, is knowing that when a decision like this is made and implemented, it's rarely reversed and can go in one of several directions long-term. My questions would include the following, is there a master plan? Is there a master plan? Could the implementation of effective music program in light of the current and future budgetary constraints, which I completely understand, declining or hopefully increasing enrollment? And district-wide desire to offer music to our students? If there's no plan, why not? And if there is, why isn't? What solutions have been offered to this board as the parents other than the plan presented by Mr. Schaefer? Is there a perfect way for parents to work with the administration and staff to build such a master plan, considering mitigating the circumstances that force exist? Other than one-on-one meetings and these two-minute questions at the top? I'm very willing to take part in any of those. I have one of the things and several of these questions, which I'm happy to discuss with anyone with this board. You can find my contact information as well as my wife's son Karen's handout. My wife, Jackie, is a music substitute teacher in this district. I've spoken to several of the music faculty as well as multiple parents, and Mr. Schaefer and I have a very good one-hour meeting today. Again, I'm ultimately interested in discovering the effects of changes made today and the solutions to these issues as we move forward to provide music arts experience for children that I find to be very important to their development. To me, these are not options regardless of mandates and necessities. Music touches everyone every day. Opportunities to use lessons learned through music are endless, integral in our lifelong education. I've experienced it throughout my schooling. I was very involved in music. I can say without reservation that I'm better at what I do. I'm the director of television broadcast for Uncle Sabres and a live video editing in the garden. Thanks in large part to my experiences with music. I want that for my kids. I'm happy to help in any way, find the best way to seek that opportunity, make that opportunity better for the kids of this district. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys. I'm also gonna talk about the music plan and change that. But I'm just gonna tell you about how it affects my family. It's Jeremy, sorry. I have two children in the district, fifth and sixth grader. My children no longer take band due to the change in the plan. They bowl ball play their instruments and we're really sad about the change. I'm paying for them now to take private lessons bi-weekly. They constantly practice. They're told they're very good players. Learning an instrument takes patience and hard work. Culminating into a golf playing in a concert or recital, my children will not have that privilege and say, do not participate anymore in the school program. Last, during the spring, we were kinda told, you know, there'd be more science and social studies due to the change. My fifth and sixth graders are not receiving any more of the needed lecture. My fifth grader has at least one thirty-five minute quiet reading time while the sixth grader basically has a study hall. As Karen says, there is a dramatic, dramatic drop in the participation in the music program. As a parent of two children for who this change affected, I would like to see this to be firmly looked into, if not totally changed. I mean, music is a big part of my family, family and life, and it would be a shame if my children could not continue to play for the Eden School District. Thank you for my, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll make this quick. I'm Kelly Pat. I'm president of Eden Teachers Association. Again, I'd like to thank Mike for stopping in, checking out the GLP that meant a lot to the teachers. One more issue since we're on the area budget, we understand where we are right now. I wanted to make sure that the board was aware that as of early October, I have been hearing from teachers who have requested to attend staff development workshops, being told that they cannot attend because there was no money for substitutes. I know that was one of the areas cut last year. One of the main reasons for New York State's new A P P R requirement is to drive the teacher staff development based on what their A P P R respekt is. Okay, this in turn is to positively impact student achievement. Therefore, with this lack of funding is a great concern. So we're just asking that you please consider restoring adequate funding for the substitutes so teachers can attend staff development. There's a lot that's on our plate, as you know, with the Common Core learning standards. And the administration's been doing a great job trying to get us out to what we need to do to implement the assessments. It leaves very little time for us to network with our colleagues outside of the area or attend national conferences or New York conferences because there's just no money. So I appreciate you looking into that and have a nice Thanksgiving. You guys have a good job out of here. Thank you.
Thanks, Con.
Hi, my name is Sarah Cooper. I'm the parent today. I have my first grade daughter who would be dramatically impacted and is being dramatically impacted by what we've spoken about tonight. I have to admit that my family did not vote in the favor of having her moved to another classroom. Reason being is she's a very shy individual. She does not take bold new situations. I understand as a professional educator, the benefit of reducing those class sizes. So I'm here to say that I would hope that this is not a done deal at this point. I would be willing to revisit it. I wanna thank the board for doing what they did and trying to find money in order to provide the teachers at the other building with another teacher so it could reduce the class size. I appreciate what the board has done regarding this matter and I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to go, I want to comment to reiterate on the, the offer or what we had decided the board, we found, we found some of the extra money to basically fund the equivalent of one position. And we offered it out for any possible way that the staff and the administration, the GLP, thought best to use that money. Didn't dictate any way to use it, and it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's still on the table. If you come up with a great way to use it, then we're in favor of that. But, you know, we, we've offered that out there and we're willing to listen to solutions and, and take whatever course of action that the folks who are close to that know how best to use that money. So please keep looking at that and working on that. No, I'm sorry. The, um, sorry, that's not the format, please.
We need to wait till the next board meeting.
All right. So Mrs. Carter, again, if there's some ideas you wanna pursue, please, please do that. We're open to whatever you wanna come up with on that.
Take a little second look at it.
Moving on then, please.
Okay. Resignations under new business. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria monitor Teresa Gonzer be accepted effective November eighth, two thousand and twelve. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Gonzer for her six years of service to Eden Central School.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, I make a motion to enter executive session to discuss the nursing position resignation, nursing position hire, special ed hires, and superintendent performance.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Are you keeping a wait for time today?
Yes, well, I, yes.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, number two, accept resignation. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of school nurse Suzanne White be accepted effective October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Item B, appointments. All appointments will not be effective and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Number one, appoint school nurse. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Holly Gable, who is a registered professional nurse, be appointed on probation as a school nurse effective December tenth, two thousand and twelve, through June ninth, two thousand and thirteen. Salary is based on C S E A contract level twelve, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Appoint one-to-one teacher aide. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Claire Flynn be appointed on probation as a one-to-one teacher's aide effective November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, through May twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen. Salary is based upon C S E A contract level four, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Number three, appoint one-to-one teacher aide. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kayla Zam be appointed on probation as a one-to-one teacher aide effective November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, through May twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen. Salary is based upon C S E A contract level four, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Appoint part-time cafeteria monitor. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Karen Gross be appointed on probation as a part-time cafeteria monitor effective November twentieth, two thousand and twelve, through May nineteen, two thousand and thirteen. Salary is based upon C S E A contract level one, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Appoint long-term substitute special education teacher. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Morgan Prentice, who is certified in childhood education one through six and students with disabilities one through six, be appointed as a long-term substitute special education teacher, replacing Jacqueline Bonifanti, effective approximately January thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, through June twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Salary is based upon bachelor's, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Appoint one-to-one teacher aide for extracurricular activities. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Judy Rizone be appointed on probation as a one-to-one teacher aide for extracurricular activities, effective December fourth, two thousand and twelve, through January nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Two hours per day for approximately seven days to assist a student with special needs.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approve change in hours. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, effective September fifth, two thousand and twelve, the hours of bus driver Marilyn Jaeger be increased from six-point-five to six-point-seven-five hours per day due to an error on the original spreadsheet.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approve change in hours. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation hours be adjusted as follows, effective November fifth, two thousand and twelve. Margaret Skura, six-point-five hours Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to six-point-two-five hours Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Bonnie Gable, six-point-two-five hours Monday, Wednesday, Friday to six hours, same days. Bonnie Gable, seven-point-seven-five hours Tuesday and Thursday to seven-point-five hours. Vinnie Vacco, seven hours a day to six-point-five hours a day.
Six-point-seven-five.
Excuse me, seven hours a day to six-point-seven-five hours a day. And Dawn Preschel, three-point-seven-five hours a day to three-point-two-five hours per day.
Second.
Discussion. Think you should read that again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approve accessing of radios. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following radios be accessed and disposed of as the district deems necessary. Do I have to read all those?
No.
As presented, as presented.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approve the accessing of an exercise bike. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the key fitness air bike located at the high school, asset tag A zero-zero-one-eight-six-five-two-zero, be declared access and disposed of as the district deems necessary.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, are they gonna buy a new one?
Motion carries.
Can we? Um, they probably, I think they have a bike that's already replaced it. It's just been sitting in the basement.
Item G, designate surplus vehicle. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following vehicle be designated as surplus. Due to age, mileage, and cost of repair, it has reached the end of its useful life. Bus one-seventy, two thousand, year two thousand and two, Chevy twenty-passenger diesel. There's the VIN number, approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fourteen miles.
Second.
Discussion. What's the, what's the status? So it just won't start or what's the physical condition?
Um, it needs at least five thousand dollars worth of work. I believe it's mostly under body rust and they don't know what additional work it would need after that.
I thought it was like a pump or something and it feels like.
Fuel, fuel issue too, yeah.
It wasn't rust.
Yeah. What's a new bus cost?
A new bus, last time, oh, about twenty thousand?
For a twenty passenger?
Uh, twenty passenger might be about eighty.
And we're talking five thousand or so?
Pretty old.
Even with unknown.
They don't feel it's worth replacing. It has major mechanical problems.
They had injector pump.
Injector pump, yeah, which is a pretty pricey.
Won't stay running.
Okay, any other discussions?
How much do we normally get for these?
Nothing.
Actually, last time we did pretty good. I think we got about four, five thousand each.
Probably some injector pump.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I think I'd be okay. Don't we have a mechanic there to?
We have three mechanics.
And it's gonna cost an additional five grand?
That's just in her, not their labor. And again, they don't even know if this is gonna make it work in function of P S D O T inspection.
Sounds like it's more than a pump. I don't think pumps are five grand. I think there's even more than they're putting on there than.
Well, she doesn't have all that much in her repair line. I mean, she can't afford a twenty or thirty thousand dollar repair at this cost. You know, we don't get a budget.
It's supposed to be five.
Yeah. I mean, that's, she said for the injector pump or whatever. She said it's also rusting underneath.
But even if it's twenty, you're better off figuring out next year out a budget for that or something else or taking out the repair reserves than you are to.
Right.
Trap it. Because we're only gonna get five thousand bucks for a thing or something. I mean.
Well, it's also a ten-year-old vehicle.
It is. Can, I think it's a good point, Barb. Can we get an estimate, maybe from inside or outside, a detailed estimate on how long to repair?
Yeah, we can do that.
Does that seem like a logical answer?
Sure.
So you wanna table that one?
Yeah, so I'm making a motion to table the surplus vehicle and get a detailed assessment of cost of repair.
Second.
Working order. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approve resolution to amend the four-oh-three-B plan document. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resolution to amend the four-oh-three-B plan document to conform with HEROES Earning Assistance and Relief Act of two thousand and nine, HEART, and the Worker, Retiree, and Employer Recovery Act of two thousand and eight, W E, W R E R A, be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approve overnight wrestling trip. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, an overnight field trip for the wrestling teams participate in the Jamestown Holiday Classic, December fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, be approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approve budget increase. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the two thousand and twelve, thirteen budget be increased by two thousand and sixty dollars and fifty cents to twenty-five to $25,190,673.16 to account for increased revenues. Note, the district received $2,044 from volleyball club for officials and $16.15 from Abbey Bow Recycling for Eden Elementary.
Second.
Discussion.
Does, I do have a question. The district, when it receives $2,044 from the volleyball club and they bring that money in, does that go back out to the volleyball?
It goes to the officials for the company.
Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item K, approve memorandum of understanding. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the MOU with the administrators unit be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion, does everybody have a copy of that? Have you seen the latest version of that? That was just finalized this afternoon, according to the school attorney. I think we've talked about a lot of that before. I don't know if anybody, does anybody have any questions about it or you want to take a few minutes to read it? Are you familiar with it? I don't want to be the one that has not had a chance to go through. What we do since the next meeting was a couple of months. We wanted to get it out to tonight. Give you a second there.
If there is a discussion, if you're present, you can go to the separate session.
Yeah, I just want to see if they have any questions. Do you think anybody, anybody want, need more time or would like to go have a discussion about it? Okay, we're good? We ready, we ready to take a vote on?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry to rush us through that one. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
This mine.
That's all that stuff, so this is awesome.
Sure. I got it. I got it. I got it. The moves I can see here.
Good evening, most of you know me. I'm Sandy Plots in the GLP library. And I'm just going to take a few minutes. I'd actually, I have an exact reception. I should have been down to give a little more. So, so we can get something. But I do, I did want to show you, this is the GLP library website. The packets that you have with green paper on top tell you a little bit more about it, show you what things are in here. But I just want to show you a few things. But underneath here, if you click there. But I have all kinds of resources that are available to not only, one of the reasons I wanted to bring it to you, I was hoping that some of the parents could still be here. So if you see any of them when you leave with the class, that's after them. But I have a whole bunch of things that are available for people from all schools and also for the community. One of the ones that I put together, this is something I've been working on for about a year and a half. So when you get to budget time and you look at those places in my schedule where it doesn't say I'm teaching classes, this is the kind of thing I'm doing so you guys know what that time is being used for. This right here, what you're seeing tonight represents probably about 150 hours worth of work, just so you are aware of it. But for the parents, this gives them all kinds of links to resources that can maybe help them better understand the common core, what it is, what it is, what's being looked for. Each one of my pages is color-coded. So everything about the common core is going to be under a green heading, but I've got literacy ones. And I was going to show you a couple of these. I'm not going to tonight, but for math, for health, I have a couple new bullying things I just found today that I'm going to be adding on the next day or two. But even how to, I found this over the weekend, how to buy musical instruments, what to look for when you're buying a musical instrument for the first time for your child. But all kinds of things for parents there. One of the other ones I wanted to show you, science. And my students use these, by the way. Every day we use these all the time. But there are all kinds of different sciences. They're done by category again. I'll show you one of the ones. I actually, when I'm on hold on the phone, I use several of these. But they have, this is out of New York City. And their curriculum people pulled all of this together. But it's all teaching about physics and force. And the kids aren't even aware exactly that that's what they're doing, but you're designing a roller coaster. You put the different pieces over. And again, the kids were really excited. They wanted to put a loop-de-loop in toward the top. If you don't get enough force going down, it's not going to go anywhere. But you kind of get the idea. And it's so funny to watch these kids, these five- and six-year-olds, figure this out pretty quickly. It's like, well, wait a minute, how come this is going and mine's not? You know, just by looking at, as I said, it's scientific. But there's a little, there's a little card that comes down and it'll get stuck with this particular configuration. It'll get stuck because they don't have enough force going down. It's not going to carry it around that way. So maybe now, as I said, there's one that's building a burglar catcher that is, so it's one of those vertical burgles. And kids really like that one too. One of the other ones that I use in science. And again, this is open up. It's web-based, so anybody in elementary or wherever can use them also. I love this site here. But literally, you can come up with any animal in the world and come up with a video for it. One I'm going to pull up for you tonight is an old lion tamarin, which is a rainforest animal. It's endangered. There are less than 400 of them left in the world. And it'll pull them up as videos or as photos, still photos. And these are all, you have to check. But most of these are, kids can use in reports. You can embed them in PowerPoint or whatever. You have to check depending on where they're getting them from. For the most part, a lot of the ones in archive are available. Again, I won't play the whole thing for you. Again, if you're doing something about the rainforest, it gives them a sense of what this animal looks like in its habitat. And if we're having a discussion about the rainforest, why it's important to save it, you get to see these arboreal creatures in their trees. Cut down the trees, these little guys have no place to live. So it's, as I said, it's really, a really great resource. And as I said, I know none of you in here have kids in my building, but these are things that certainly could be used for homework for anybody. The last one I want to show you tonight. And I'm particularly excited about this. Now, teachers can also give me websites, websites that they have found and I put them up for them. That's what I do. They don't have time to do that kind of thing. They give them to me and I'm totally excited. This one is one Mrs. Bossert gave to me. And she wanted to use it with her students in the lab. And she was just going to project it on the screen. And I said, well, if I put it up as a link, I said, each of the kids can have it on their own computer. And you'll see why that, she was excited about that in just a second. Now, these are the Alasko caves. If you're not familiar with background on them, I was a high school French teacher before I was a librarian. But these are probably the oldest cave paintings in the world. They were discovered in 1940. My little boy was eight years old. He was out with his dog. His dog disappears. And he finds he's gone into this cave and there are these magnificent paintings. Now, it's been on my bucket list since I was about 12. I used to go get cows for my parents. And so I'd have the dog go with me. And I just so hoped that I would find the cave. Never happened, but I wanted to do this. Now, these caves, about 30 years ago, they sealed them off. You couldn't go in anymore because the air, the modern air, was destroying the paintings. So I thought, oh, man, I'm never going to be able to see this. You can actually go and tour. This is a virtual tour that I'm taking you through now. Each one of these caves. It shows you that little map here where you're going. And Mary Ellen does a unit every year with cave drawing with the kids. And she and I were talking about this. And I will tell you, when she brought her kids in, I was teaching in the library and I was checking something out. I was helping the kids check out books. And I kept leaning over and I'm like, Mrs. Plots? Mrs. Plots? Oh, sorry. But to see those kids in that lab, they were so totally engaged and totally into that. And you can take, you can, the different things that you see coming up on the screen, you can go in different directions. So not everybody's going in the same cave in the same place. It's really, really neat. And I just, and that's something I just wanted to tell you. Mary Ellen has always done this. I have two videos, a DVD and a video on the caves that I got for a couple of years ago. Nothing. I watched the kids watch these, nothing like doing this. I mean, the way they were engaged, it was just amazing to watch them. And she was saying, because I asked her a little bit about it today, she said what was really cool for her, what she said, the day after they did this in the lab, she had three or four kids come back to her and tell her how much they enjoyed doing this with their parents at home. Because I had the link up there and they could see it. And it's like, Mom, Dad, this was so cool. You got to see this. So it's really neat and just neat to see them. So as I said, if you run across any, any resources that you think would be beneficial that we should have up there, let me know. I'll put them in. I've got my parent page. It doesn't take me that long to do it. I'm very happy to do it, to do it for anybody. I also put an invitation from Mrs. Bossert on the bottom because when I went to go ask her, she said, now, how do you? She said, she was going to email the board members. And I said, well, I'm actually doing a presentation and I'm going to use this tonight. I said, would you like me to bring it for you? Our, they had a cancellation from another school and our kids' pictures, our secondary's pictures that they did based on Alasko caves are going to be on exhibit from now until. Yeah, November 30th, Athel right now. So based on all this. And as I said, it's just really, really exciting. So as I said, it's something I just wanted to make you all aware of. I use it all the time. My teachers use it. And as I said, if there's something, something you feel that'd be helpful to add to it, I would be very happy to do that for you as well. Any questions?
Administrative staff, yeah. Lauren R. did the class size. I wanted them to turn the lights off so I could see actually the thing.
I'm actually going to introduce Kelly Rosa, who is one of the RTI reading teachers at the GLP. Who's currently doing her administrative internship at the GLP campus in the district. So I'm going to give you a little precursor to her presentation. She can send the data as part of her district role. She needs to be the survey researcher. They need them to present to the board. So I'll obviously without the truth and support to Delhine. And I can stay up here and answer any questions if you might have. We cannot have any state assessments at the GLP, which you've heard this field before. But we do have quite a bit of data with AIMS-UP. We actually have added more this year. We currently AIMS-UP our students in the area of the LA Math. We've added a multitude of probes this year for many reasons. One, because it gives us information for not only student achievement and progress, it also gives us information on the strategies we use, the programs we use. Are we making good progress in our instruction? How are our students progressing? It helps us identify students in our response to intervention and academic intervention services. It helps us place them in an algorithm program. We had this conversation when we gave you the RTI plans in both the LA Math for K through six. It also helps us to identify if our students are progressing or not, if we need to change the strategies or programs we're using for them. We also benchmark our students three times a year. So we do that through fall, the winter, and the spring. So that's how we get all of that information. If they are, if they're placed in the RTI program, one of the things we use for those students is we progress behind them. So once they're in the program, we progress behind them every two weeks. What's important about that is once they're in the program and we're providing intervention services, we need to make sure what we're doing is working for our students. If they're making that progress on an upward curve, then we know what we're doing is making that difference and getting them towards their goals. If it's a flat line, I always call it a flat line, or going towards a downward trend, we need to go against something different. We need to change our strategies. You all, Karen, talk about changing the tier that they're in. Tier one is classroom instruction, what we're doing in the classroom. Tier two is what we do at our first level of intervention. And if they're not making it to tier two, we put them in a tier three, which is sometimes different interventions. They have strategies, different programs, different times, and different dates. So it really changes the scope that we're providing them. So we're going to share some of that data. We're going to show it to you in two different ways. One is how our students grow from the fall to the spring and what happens with them when they're with us for a school year. And we're also going to share the data from the AIMS-UP data we gathered from 2010, 2011, and then 2011, 2012. And what that helps us to do is very similar to what we do when we look at new state assessments and how is the impact of the changes we're making in our strategies and in our programs, in our instruction? And are we making improvements to those? So that each year we gather AIMS-UP data, is it improving? Is it a flat line and we have a downward trend? So there's two ways for us to look at this data. AIMS-UP has really taken a whole nother level of importance for us this year because with APPR, required learning objectives, because we don't have state assessments at the GLP, most, if not all of our teachers are using the AIMS-UP data in some way to approach the APPR requirements for new state. It has taken even a higher level of importance for us other than just student achievement and success of our programs and strategies. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelly and she'll share.
So our first group of slides is looking at the performance of our students during the 2011-2012 school year. So I'm just going to go through each grade level and what we look at in that grade level, starting off with kindergarten. The first three slides are going to be foundational reading skills. So this is letter naming fluency. And you can see we benchmarked in the fall, winter, and spring and the percentage of students that met benchmark. Now, each time we give that fall, winter, and spring, it's harder and harder to reach benchmark level in that skill. So looking from fall to spring, you might, when you drill down and look at student data, individual data, in the fall, you might have only needed to name 20 letters in a minute to reach that new benchmark. Whereas in the spring, you might have had to read 60 letters in a minute. So each time you give it, the skill gets progressively harder and in order to provide that foundational reading skill. Phoning segmentation measures the ability for a child to break apart sounds they hear in a word, which is a pre-break skill. We don't give that in the fall. But again, we give it in the winter and the spring. And we can see that the world with the grade level demonstrated in that skill.
And one of the things I wanted to mention, although when you looked at that last slide, you probably saw there was 80% in the green and there was maybe 81% in the green. And although we have a similar percentage in the green, that's what we want our students in the green. These are a benchmark. But when you drill down and look at individual scores, students' individual scores have significant growth within that green. So although the green might not look significantly that they're growing, because you might say, well, why are they not at 80 here and then all of a sudden at 95? But when you drill down, an individual student might have been at 20 and still in the green, but then all of a sudden is at 65 and still in the green. Because they have movement within those tiers. This is the overview that we're looking at to make sure, are they in the tier they need to be in?
Yep, and your benchmark level becomes harder to reach.
What's your benchmark, state benchmark or national benchmark?
It's a national benchmark. Moving on to K, this is nonsense word fluency, which looks at their ability to rapidly decode unfamiliar words. So that is a strong foundational reading skill to predict future reading success. And again, you can see what they did in the winter and what they did in the spring. And it's given the first time in the winter means that's the first time you're going to look at when a child would be going to decode words. Moving on to kindergarten math. This is number identification. It's how many numbers they're identifying in a minute, which predicts baseline math skills. And this is quantitative discrimination. So it's their ability to discriminate and pick out the higher number in a set of given numbers to that child and how many they do in a minute. So it not only tests the skill, it tests how fluent they are at the skill. Moving on to first grade. Again, this is a reading skill, nonsense word fluency, which is starting to build in kindergarten and continues throughout first grade. You can see where they started the year and the percentage of students that were highly proficient in that skill at the end of the year. This is a first grade skill called reading curriculum-based measure, which is also known as oral reading fluency. fluency. It's how many words you can correctly read in a minute, predicting how fluent or reader they will be as they go throughout their academic career. That's where our first grade tested out last year. This is number identification in math. So we're on to math skills. You can see assistant benchmarking across the school year there.
How long have we, sorry, I was just going to say, how long have we been using this for math?
The math is new. This is the second year I've been using math.
And the kids that get put into an RTI type program, is that in the Elsens, right?
Yes, yes. And it could be your low reading scores, the ones that are just barely making benchmark and want to target those children also. So quantity discrimination in first grade. And then moving on to, again, here's the second grade oral reading fluency. That benchmark gets harder to reach as the school year goes on because your expectations are rising as the school year goes on. And this is math computation, which is different than what the kindergarten and first grade. This is actually how many mathematical problems they are solving in a minute. This is kind of paper, or eight minutes, I'm sorry. It's the only eight-minute test. All the other ones are one minute. How many they're solving correctly in eight minutes. Now, then, now we move on to comparison between the 2010 school year in the blue. This is the percentage of students that reached the end of the year in benchmark, so end in green. And you can see the growth from 2010-11 to our 2011-12 school year at the end of the year, comparing each, across the bottom is each of the probes.
Now, is that the same group of students or is it the same grade level?
Same grade level.
Same grade level.
Same grade level.
Yeah, so the kid. We have it on a vertical for you here. So the blue are kindergartners and the red again are the next group of kindergartners coming through that grade level the following year. So we show growth in each one of those measurement tools. And grade one, again, comparing year to year, nonsense word, oral reading fluency, number identification, and quantity discrimination. You can see the growth.
Can you go back more years?
Sure.
I mean, more years. Can you give more years of data?
Ah, yes.
That's only two data points.
We could go back farther than that. And the reading skills.
That could simply be the class, and I'd like to see more, more years on the line to see what the, if it's just a anomaly, do the one.
This was the first year we ever closed the data this way, so we absolutely could go.
We've never folded this way before.
Yeah, that's.
The only thing, you couldn't go back farther isn't the math, because we just started.
Makes sense.
But that would be a great way to do it.
Yeah, just want to make sure it's not one on five.
And then lastly, grade two, oral reading fluency is the reading probe that we give. And then the math computation, 11-12 school year was the first year of the data.
And now this year, we also gave something called M-CAP, which is another math probe that tests them in different math skills.
Do we use any of these probes at the elementary school?
All of them. Well, not all of them. We do oral reading fluency. We do something called MAES 3-6, which tests something different in the English skills. And then we do M-COM and M-CAP. So we introduced M-COM and M-CAP this year for math skills at the second grade level. So we really wanted to raise that expectation because we have more data second grade, really because the standards are just so much more at a higher level. We need to start grabbing some more information. And then we do M-CAP and M-COM, that's 3-6.
Do we share anything else with parents?
At conferences, we show, and then children who receive AIS services, it's shown on their reports.
We used to print all of these reports for all the parents. It's extremely costly to print the reports. It's extremely, I mean, there's a significant amount of making, a significant amount of paper. What we found is it was, they were rather difficult reports for many parents to decipher. We usually really use this information for student progress in and out of, you know, information of, do we put children in or out of RTI program? Are they on benchmark? How are our programs working? And the way we really use it at this point is if a parent ever wants that information, they can certainly request it and ask for it. But for us to print it for our K8 body became more of a cost as opposed to being useful to people.
Couldn't we put it on the portal? A soft copy, portal-type access?
You can't post it online?
It's a closed website. The website itself.
We have a county that we log.
Or put a soft copy out there or something for the parent portal?
The problem is disseminating the reports here and then pulling it apart by the individual as each of the parent portal, or each of the power schools accounts as by individual student.
Right.
So you have to get it somewhere loaded by individual students. So it's really more of a chaos right now trying to figure this one out.
Do the parents get any copy in there at all, like once a year? No, the AIS students, it's reported on the report that they would receive from the AIS teacher, that information is shared with them, but you know.
There's really no way for us to print the one paper. Each one of those probes gets their own report. So it's just, I mean, it would cost the district probably thousands of dollars to print all of these reports.
I have copies online.
We used to print them up, first of all, we gave last probes. We added so many probes and it just became. We actually had parents calling, they don't know how to read this report. So it became more effective for teachers to share the information at a parent-teacher conference.
It's not that difficult to read it. And my question would be, at the end of the year, parents get one at the end of the year. So they, because, the reason, Mrs. Carter, is I had one in September, I had one in the winter, and I had one in the spring. And when the spring came, it's like they're all on the spring. All of them.
Well, right now, we're probably talking like.
Then when my child went to the elementary, they had the next grade. So they had like two, two half-years of information on there, which would have been sufficient.
But I think what we're thinking, I think what happened though was because we were trying to go green and save money, I think for each student, we're probably looking at probably pages of colored reports to work in if we do it at the end of the year. And we're not even printing the report cards. So I think that, I think that you're right. I don't disagree with you. I mean, and we really did get phone calls from people who just couldn't understand what it said. So we then just took all that information and said, well, what if we went over to parents' teacher conference so they could understand what it said? And then at the end of the year, said if anybody truly wanted the information, they could just call us and we would print it, as opposed to printing it to everybody, who might have been just putting it in circular fire anyway. And we certainly would not print it for someone who asked. Do you think they have questions?
No, thank you.
The only time that they see it then is at the parent-teacher's conference at one time a year. So they're not going to really see the spring results. Is there any way that they're, that they could be notified that this is available if you want? Do you know how your three, four card would be, like a printed copy, it's available?
When we do our Google from that call, we can say, four cards are available and our web reports are free. We definitely include that in the Google from that call. We make them available.
To come from the GLP report, E elementary also uses AIMS Web. And as you heard, it's reading fluency and reading comprehension. We do it three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, with two weeks progress monitoring being done as needed. For the math, we use math computation called M-COM and math application called M-CAP. That feeds into our state test results. Everybody, the package goes around, everybody get the packet. And the packets, this should be familiar to you, you saw this back during the goal-setting session. This was the left-hand two columns. Mr. Graff has more on it with, with the regions tests. And these are in alpha order. And the E scores for, this is, this is the score for ELA. And this is, this is a composite score for ELA for all three through eight ELA. The next column is a composite for all three through eight math.
Test your cell, so can you sort by the composite scores real quick?
Part D.
Easy.
It's covered. You'll see that, if you were to do the math here, you would see that in the 28 school districts in Erie County, which we've been using for comparison purposes for a couple of years now, out of the ELA, we were 14th, and out of the composite, we were at the half, we were 15th. The yellow color, it happens to be school districts that Mr. Graff looked up, and the state has said this is a school, these are school districts that are similar to Eden at the K8 level by virtue of the demographics of the student population. You'll see it on another graph, I think, that Mr. graphic, that Mr. Graff has, that it does the same for high schools, looking at student demographics. There's a correction here, those, those schools that are, that are similar to us, we were actually in eighth place. There were a couple ties in here, but we were in eighth place for schools that were similar to us for ELA and eighth place for math. When we go over to look at our ELA scores. That should be the second page. And you can see the scores going back several years, fourth, of course, the most years, because the testing has been there for the most years. Of course, across the bottom, you see the scaled scores. And then going up from the bottom up, the number of ones, ones, twos, threes, and fours. And this number right here tells you the difference in scaled score from the last year. So for instance, in third grade, you see that there was a decrease in the scaled score from the previous year, minus two points, that index score that we have come to use for valiant purposes, comparing us to the other school districts in western New York. Fourth grade, a minus five. Fifth grade made good gains, 15. Sixth grade, minus five. And seventh and eighth grade, gains of five points each.
When you say gains, it's not necessarily gains of a group, right? It's gains of a level?
It's greater gains of that level.
So it could be, again, not only a higher performing group.
Well, you're right. Any, in a student body that has at a grade level maybe 105 kids, one kid represents one percentage point in, you're right.
So the difference from year to year is a difference of that grade level year to year, it's not, it's not reflecting any, it's not normalizing anything against the student group or gain of that group. But APPR is not supposed to be a gain of students.
If you're looking, we're talking about looking at like how the sixth grade did when they were a year ahead in fifth grade, a year ahead in fourth grade, yeah.
Right, right.
So there were actually, what, if you look, I'm just going to add class to that, seventh grade in the time of life, I mean, you're at a next score of 153 and a 160, so it's definitely something for that group.
So you're talking about using the seventh grade score here?
Next one.
This one?
Yeah, compared to the eighth grade score.
To that 160?
Yeah.
Okay. And you could drag it out, Zach, you could drag it on this way, and back, and back.
But again, that's, that's using, they'll probably have to be looking at that way though, that's a state. Is that normalized against other schools?
That's a performance in that.
So it's normalized to the state changing their, so the state changing their school can screw that number up, right? The state changing their tests can screw that number up, right?
Well, you'll find there was a.
It's not normalized.
It's normalized in the aspect that it's always figured the same exact way, regardless of what they're doing on their side. They always calculate it exactly the same.
Well, we had that big change in the benchmark a few years ago.
Yes, yes.
So it threw a change. Abnormally threw those scores in the world forever. I can imagine that, that was universal across. But the way they calculated remained the same.
But if you're just looking at our stuff here, and you didn't know that that displaced, you would draw the wrong conclusion.
Yeah, you would say between 2009, 10, and 2000, you know, what happened? We fell off the face of the earth. So did everybody else. You'll probably also find that at the end of this school year, with the move towards a new Common Core learning standards, that there's an expectation that the tests are going to be, in the terms of rigor, that they're going to be much more rigorous. And many school districts are expecting that it's going to be quite a jump for particularly kids in lower grades to all of a, all of a sudden be required to do this. So we kind of think that might happen. To look at each individual score. This is that third grade score you were seeing all over here, the scaled score and how we ranked third grade ELA, 28 school districts, 17th. Fourth grade, 13th. Fifth grade, 13th. Sixth grade, 9th. Seven, 16th. And eight, 14th. Everybody got that in their packets? We jump over to math for a moment. And as we go through three, four, five, six, seven, eight, there's a nice upward trend that peaks in fifth and sixth grade. Look at the individual scores. Third grade, 26th. Fourth grade jumps off the third. Fifth grade, first place in Erie County, out of the 28 school districts. Sixth grade, first place in Erie County. Seventh grade, 13th. And eighth grade, 20th. I also threw in, I don't know how interested you are, in the science social studies. This is not used a lot for comparison purposes, but I put it in there because of the years between the testing. Prepare for the panel. I did bring along with me, if you wanted me to talk more specifically about gap analysis that the teachers and I did at all the grade levels. When we went over our fall benchmarks, our fall AIMS Web data, we also went through the gap analysis of how we compared to the rest of, the rest of the state, Erie, Tewosse, all that kind of thing. We identified the areas with greatest potential growth. And then furthermore, we looked at those areas to say, is this still a Common Core learning standard? Because if it's not still a Common Core learning standard, then it will not be in the new state test, and there's no sense us spending a lot of time on. But the ones that were Common Core learning standards, the teachers have analyzed the data so they know where to concentrate their efforts.
So do you have a list going through this of kind of the conclusions you drew from it and what you want to do about it, or that kind of thing?
I don't have it prepared to hand out and discuss, but I do have it, you can see the discussion that the teachers and I had with it, but I could prepare that if you want to know more about it. Of course, in some of the cases, like fifth and sixth grade math, they were top, so there was, there is no gap. But in some of the work, we've been analyzing the gap.
But there's the opposite of the gap. What did you do so well? What would be your best practice for that? Is it just that we're grouping through, or you changed some of the instructional methods or the critical content? What is, something happened that, unless it is just that grouping through, which you have two groups, fifth and sixth, that were all very high?
Well, we've had that trend for a couple of years now, as you might remember, where we were at sixth grade at the top school in Core last year. Yeah. And so I'm sure our teachers would like to say it's time on task that we devoted, particularly in the realm of math, matter of fact, I've heard them speak in the coffin. And that is part of it. With this new move to Common Core learning standards, it is going to be quite a change in identifying what the Common Core learning standards requires of us, and moving on from there is even more important than the gap. there is even more important than the gap analysis by itself, right?
This breaks out. This was the information that, I appreciate her flag, your eyes for me. You did receive permission. So they're saying crevice here, using the, the X scores, five regions exam. The school districts in blue are considered similar to EDA. Again, we don't, we don't know why there's a couple anomalies where the Q is considered similar in elementary but not high school. And opposite here, where Williamsville is considered similar at high school level but not at the elementary level. No reason for it.
Who decides that?
That state, they have a formula that they use to determine that. So you can see each of our, each of our regions exams, and we are here in the middle in green and our ranking, ELA, retired, algebra, seventeen, geometry, fifteen, and a cross there. When you look at the similar schools-
You did look at the eighth grade math. Well, you have fifteen more than eighteen or nineteen.
And then the high school ranks, based on our comparison group, there are nine schools in that rank, in their ranking. And then it's on the top of the next page where it says, where we kind of, in those areas. I don't want to screen it too much, you guys can read that, so. I don't know if there's any questions on that one. It's the next one, I think it's going to be, I think the numbers are going to be a little more discussed, huh? Because it's something that I think we all kind of, not that we've lost track of it, but hasn't really been focused. And that is the race to the top information. You know, this is our, this is the basis of all our inquiry teams and really that federal money that came down from people from the federal government and the state, I think it was about seven hundred and fifty million dollars. They distributed about three hundred and seventy-five million to the schools directly. And this is really the report that we generate each year to let the federal government know how we're doing in terms of accepting those funds. I forget what our goal was, it's like thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty-six thousand dollars. There was our portion of the-
It was one time.
Seven hundred and fifty million.
It's over four years.
All thirty-five K a year?
No, no, no. Over four years.
Thirty-five dollars.
Over four years, like eighty-six hundred a year.
Right. And that money goes to Bosse's to facilitate these programs.
Nice.
So nine, ten was the baseline here, and you can see that the areas that the federal government and the state are focusing on, and that is fourth grade ELA and math, eighth grade ELA and math, and then the subgroups within. So our baseline data is here, that where you see New York State, that is the New York State composite average for all school districts in New York State, where you see the LEA, that's us, that's EDA. And these were our baseline scores, right here. So that, that first year, nine, ten, we had seventy-six percent of our students proficient in English, English form, math, four, seventy-six percent, English eight, fifty-eight percent, and math, eight, fifty-one percent. Then the states, as, as they work through the process, every school district has to have these increases. So in the ten, eleven year, we had increase by two percent there, one percent. And each year moving forward, they dictated to us what they needed to be.
And they're measuring by grade level, right?
Correct. So this year, right, and it's really just based on the fourth and eighth grade, the rest of it is out in the next one. So this year, really is, is the only thing that they want us to report back on. For fourth grade ELA, our target was to have eight percent. And we are at a seventy-three percent level. So what does that mean? This is, this is one of the things that we talked about as a new department chair. They don't, they don't forgive us now and say, okay, that seventy-three has to grow by three next year to be a seventy-six. We are still obligated to make this growth, to get up to this level of growth, this eighty-three for next year. So now our gap between this year and next year is ten, we actually need to grow by ten percentage points, which is ten percent more of our students to proficient in ELA Fourth grade math, we're over. And again, when we were looking at this, as long as we maintain that, we will, we've already met that four-year target, so now we need to maintain that and make it grow. ELA eight, we're at sixty-two percent. The ultimate goal is sixty-eight percent, so we're just about on target there. And again, math eight, we're ahead of the game. Goal is fifty-nine, we're at sixty-five, and we, that is on target. So we've made, we need to maintain that, at the very least, maintain it, but ideally to get that to grow more.
Would you say grade math will be more than it wants to be?
Right now, if you look at, we're at sixty-five percent of our kids proficient, and if you look at the very last one where it says four-year gain, that's where they want students in New York State to be, sixty-five percent proficient. Now, again, our, our goal is not to keep it there, we want it to keep moving forward. As you can see, we've been making, we've been making strides over the last three years. So, you know, we've had fourteen percent increase from our baseline. Our baseline is actually below the state average. State average was almost fifty-five percent, we're at fifty-one. And now we're, we're above it and actually at where they want us to be in the four-years after the second year. So we have made significant increases there. Then they break down each of the individual subgroups, where we had students in those subgroups at baseline time. The only ones I'm really going to focus on are the students with disabilities and the economically disadvantaged, only because those numbers are relatively stable. Our African-American population, our Hispanic and Latino population, and our English language borders, depending on the year, we may have zero. And you'll see a couple examples of that. Last year, fourth grade ELA, we had no African-Americans taking the test, so we can't be graded out on them. But if you'll get students with disabilities, based on our same thing, within that subgroup, we were supposed to be at fifty-one percent this year, and it's at seventeen percent. Economically disadvantaged, we were supposed to be at sixty-nine percent, and we're at fifty-four. So there's some work to be done there, and I believe there's still important to be dealing with special ed.
Of course, in those subgroups, the population is so small.
Could be.
Where we're talking about one hundred and five kids at a grade level, and one kid represents one percent, we might have a subpopulation of twelve kids.
I would, I would guess all these subgroups are under twenty, I'd give it more than four. So the same, same thing holds true here for each of the other grade levels. You know, this one jumped off the page to me this year, so again, students with disability in eighth grade ELA, goal was twenty percent, we had zero, we can have every one student make a benchmark, one, not one special ed student make a benchmark in ELA. I have students with disabilities, again, just about to four-year target. Economically disadvantaged, we're at sixty-three percent, the target was forty-seven. And again, we're already significantly over what they were looking for in the four-year gain. Another thing here, definitely, just things we don't think about with everything else going on. The way that they break down the ELA regions and ELA math, you can see these scores here, right now, we think of everything as sixty-five, we pass with a sixty-five. That's going to be changing in the near future, where the ELA, COM-ELA region score to pass is a seven-five, and on the regions math exams, it can be eight. So that's how they're, that's how they're measuring us, knowing that those changes are coming, they're holding us to those standards already. And you can see, when you, when you take those into account, we have eighty-seven percent of our students get seventy-five or higher on the COM-English recents, sixty-eight percent getting eighty or higher on the A, I don't think, is there a specific math exam, or is it all math? All math exams. We have sixty-eight percent getting eighty or higher. So again, if you, if you know how we traditionally think of sixty-five as passing, that number is probably high eighties, low nineties, high eighties, low nineties, or mid-nineties here, but as soon as you make this change in the way that they're looking at that, you can see there's, there's big hits there in the way that they calculate that.
And you're expecting the tests to get harder too?
The tests will get harder.
Does the department test get harder? What the gold state is not?
Gold state is. That is a pretty point. And at our four-year graduation rate, again, one of, one of the anomalies of this, I guess, you know, here's the federal government telling us, we're going on four-year graduation rate, New York State, everything that we do with New York State is based on a five-year graduation rate, everything. So a little bit different, but again, always, always high, but you know, that's, that's a pretty lofty goal, ninety-seven percent. We can get there, but it's pretty, pretty lofty. So this led to, and I did not, I forgot to scan this when I did your, your packets, I didn't get it from Mrs. Carissa. In your packet, there's a page that looks like this, says race to the top inquiry team focus, we have two of the teams, we have sub- eighth grade math, and we have sub- eighth grade English. Based on the data review, the initial data review, the district shows these two areas as two of the areas of focus. So we've met a couple times with each of these groups already. The math group is led by Teresa Gray from Bosse's and myself. We have one, two, three, four, five teachers. The ongoing focus this year is going to be for them to incorporate spiral assessments within, within what they're doing every day. Not over and above, but working that concept into the assessments they're already getting so that they can get that immediate feedback, they know what some of the weak areas are, they're focusing on that, and they're going to be using a seventy, twenty, ten model for testing this year. Seventy percent of all tests will have current material, twenty percent will have previous information, and ten percent will be future information. So they're going to, they're going to continue to give those assessments within what they're doing, they're going to take that information, analyze it, and they're going to see, okay, on the new, on the new test, on the new material, kids are struggling with whatever the concept is. Well, they have to know, and the next assessment is going to be part of that twenty percent so they can review it, test it again, until they make sure that they are, the students are mastering those skills.
What happens if we just say, forget race to the top, we'll cover our numbers.
What happens?
What's the penalty?
We'll lose that. We'll lose that thirty-five thousand dollars.
You mean Bosse's will lose that thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, I don't know. Is there a true- There is no race to the top. And it's funny you said that, because I had a teacher speak up today at the department meeting and said, when is somebody just going to say, I'm not doing it? We refuse. And I forget, there was a movie he was referencing, when he said that, he said, our only request is to refuse. And he says, what, what would happen? He said, what if we stop? We're not doing the ATR stuff, we're not doing this stuff, we're choosing as a discipline to do something else and come at us.
Does the race to the top scores, if you will, align with the state scores of both of the board for a hundred percent?
The same test.
Yeah, same test. So we're working on the same things, we do pursue that.
Exactly.
I try to teach you something, I mean, this is not, you're either ready to do this at all, and it takes us a different direction if we want to go as, as a typical.
Because if you make, if you make those goals in proficiency, then you're going to have your index score to go up, and your ranking's going to go up, so it's all connected.
So again, just looking at some of the report card data, which is where we generate the numbers to plug in here. Seventh grade math, since the benchmark in nine, ten, is made seven percent gain, eighth grade is made about fourteen percent gain, which we are reporting now.
Take a notice post on that one.
Yeah.
Are you focusing in on, for race to the top, are you focusing on these two areas you said made because those are two things that we're struggling with?
Correct, they have so much.
So it's not because those, eighth grade is necessarily what the race to the top wants to focus on?
No, we choose, we chose.
We have created, it's also based on the needs and priorities.
Okay, all right, you got the exact take. Focus on what it is to move all the things that work, and-
Here, here, there was a dual purpose, she, I mean, there really was a dual purpose behind it.
Reseda.
These were CEDAP inquiries, or the fallout of CEDAP.
Right, they did, they, based on the needs of, in the book that the data's whole. Because in addition to those two teams, we have a K-three math team, we have a team that addresses mastery across the district, which are the level fours and mastery. Right, and then we have a inquiry team that addresses the special ed, and we look at those cohort scores in special ed.
So sub- the eighth grade ELA, we're pouring the particulars there, like Ben McAtkinson is Bosse's, he is on, Pat McKenna is the team administrator leader. And they're focusing on, again, doing some interim assessments for things to get immediate feedback, immediate data on the kids. And they're really focusing on three areas based on data analysis, and that was finding methods for tests, making differences, and reading charts and graphs to interpret it. So those are going to be the areas we're focused on, using that same philosophy of testing.
The team was giving, you're working this thing, they're working on graphs and charts.
Right. And then just one last one, again, just based on some of the conversations we've been handling the last couple years, just some general focus kinds of things, our graduation rate. Yeah, I kept it at the four-year, because that was how my chart was set up for the year, so. Our four-year graduation rate, our percent receiving of regions diplomas, our percent getting advanced regions diplomas, our higher ed, four-year schools, two-year schools, that I thought was important to see, you know, we've been, over the course of six years, this building's down to a hundred kids, and it's actually down to a little more, because I think EDA four right now, so we've gotten a little more than a hundred kids over six more next years. And our daily attendance rate is a lot coming for here. So I don't know if there's any general questions or, or specific questions, something else you'd like to see?
I have a question.
Sure.
On this page here, race to the top.
Yeah.
Sub- the eighth, you pulled the sub- the eighth because they were lacking on that.
Right, that's our style, that area of focus for everybody.
Do you think it's the class? Think it's the group?
No, I'm going to say no, only because it gets back over the course of years, you know, it's something that-
That's why I'm picking the eighth.
No, because if you, if you look, the kids are, you know, they're, they're, it's a different group of kids that, that you're looking at from year to year.
And every year it's a sub- the eighth.
Sub- the eighth grade is where we see the, from sixth to seventh, and sub- the eighth, that's where we see the-
Have you figured out?
I mean, this, this actually has helped, because I think it is, it is focused- I mean, this actually has helped because I think it is focused. Obviously, I think the process has helped. It can be frustrating. I know the ELA group's a little frustrated right now about the whole thing. It's been a little bit, but I think we'll get that straightened out. But I really think that the inquiry team process has helped a lot. And you can see we've made some gain in it because we're truly focusing on those areas where we know that there's problems. From year to year, it could be different. I know that the areas of focus last year in ELA are different than those areas this year because it's a little different.
The other question I have is on the last page. When you're measuring the graduation rates, it's four percent. So these numbers here, Mr. Graff, are all percentages?
Yes, those are all percentages. No, those are all percentages.
So it doesn't matter if the enrollment is higher or lower, it's still percentages.
Is there anything else you get?
Well, last one. I'll scan through these guys. What is coming?
Thank you.
Thank you.
They got in the read, they got this assessment update on Monday, the 26th. Helped up an audit committee meeting that we received and reviewed the report. And just to again to mention, the audit committee also needs to meet to discuss the events to the external audit and the recommendations for external audits for 2013.
Schedule that sometime. Michael, you got it?
Rebecca, White, Lucinda, let me get that.
Yeah, once you've... I mean, not right now, but just send the mic on.
I'm all set, Steve. I've heard from the group tonight.
Anybody have anything I want to talk about?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Eden Athletics Fall Program. They did a tremendous job. The Eden Girls Volleyball Team, winning the state again four years in a row. Congratulations.
Here, here.
Mark? Yeah, it was great.
Yeah. Did a great job.
Anybody else? Okay. I make a motion under executive session to discuss a personnel matter from the... What's the topic? From the determination that we discussed at the last meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming, everyone.